Have the mindset of what was displayed. And I just want to know particularly Rashad Jackson, that I truly value his work and his effort. As well as the other team, and I call them team members. They are members of other boards and commissions who had to deal with some very inappropriate comments. And I just wanted to make a public announcement to that effect because there have been a few emails sent. Each of us in the council have gotten it of other board and commission members who have responded and said the same thing. And I felt like it was important that this be done in a more public scenario than what happens with just an email directed to specific individuals. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Wiegand. Anyone else? I want to give kudos to Susan and the police officers here. We had a couple of requests for assembly under prior vigil and staff and the officers and the DSO worked together to provide good logistics and good safety measures. And all both the events went really well and well attended. So I want to thank Susan and Ms. Katry and the various officers who participated in this planning and execution of it. Thank you very much. Okay, if there are none for council staff, do you have any announcements? Ms. Katry?
Test, okay. Thank you, sir. I just want to let you know that we just sent out a new e-newsletter. And in that e-newsletter, we listed all of the upcoming dates for budget presentations. And as you know, we have a pretty extensive presentation of different facets of our budget, much more than I think many communities do. And it just gives us a lot of time to look closely at each piece of the budget. And you know, at the end, we kind of roll it all up together and there's a budget hearing. But I just wanted to let you know that I did send those dates out to the public so that they can see how many opportunities there are to chime in on that. And I really want to encourage anyone who isn't already subscribed to subscribe to that e-newsletter because we really do try to put everything you could want to know about what's going on in the town in that e-newsletter. And when you go to the page, it's townofSunnyvale.org and then backslash communication. When you go there, it gives you an opportunity to sign up for that e-newsletter, for our emergency alerts that we send out like during foul weather. It also allows you to register to receive copies of the agendas as they're sent out. So just want to encourage everyone to do that. Thank you, sir.
And I'm going to add to that specifically one item. I know many people asked about the when the council may take discussion on the fire station location. I believe staff is trying to include them on the July 13 meeting, but the date is not fixed, not finalized. So I asked Mr. Gopri, sir, please pay attention to the town website. Also last the sign up for the news flash. That way, those who are interested to participate can participate and know when this is going to happen. In addition to this is everything else. So we count town really try hard to communicate better and early. But there's a little partnership on everybody to want to sign up and be part of it. Anything else, staff? Okay. And going to move on to the public forum. This is the time for members of the audience may come forward. I'll speak to the council on items which are not listed on this agenda, as well as matters of legal or personal matters. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward, please do so at this time. Or if anyone calling in using Zoom wants to raise your hand, please do so at this time.
We have one hand raised.
Okay, no one is coming forward from the members of the audience. There's one hand raised. Joseph, can you state their name, please?
The name here is Dawn, and excuse the pronunciation, Geroso.
Mr. Geroso, you're up. Good evening, sir.
Please unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to find, is this when we're having conversations about the firehouse? Or is that later in the meeting?
So that will be on earliest on July 13. Staff is still working with the engineering company to get that final date. So if you could either look at the town website later, maybe two or three days before July 13, or you may even subscribe to the news, town news flash. That way you will get notified in the news flash. So we don't know exact date, but the earliest is July 13. It's not, it will not be today.
Thank you, sir. I did try to do that. I haven't received anything. My question to you prior to that is, are all three locations still up for consideration? Or are there just two at this point?
At this time, there are two locations. One is on the Glacier Track and one is at the Jobson, Jobson Park, which is the cross by the intersection of Jobson and Town East. And the other one is the Jobson and Tetris.
Yes, I live right there. So what are the options to be able to get the consideration back to the town hall area? Because neither of those are good for the people that have purchased homes in this area. So what is our process to be able to address that?
Right now, I think we moved past that one based on the recommendations and the council decisions.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I'm going to let, I'm going to let our town attorney speak to you on that one. Thanks, Ms. Brenda.
So at this point, this is not a posted agenda item. So we can't really have discussion about it except to advise if the item is on another agenda. And I realize this caller has questions, but we're not allowed to respond under the Open Meetings Act. Okay, so how do I go about finding more information and finding out what to do to get it a different location? I don't know how to do that, but I'm more than willing to learn. But I need to figure out how to do. The only thing that we can say is that I would suggest that you contact the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald, and thanks for the call. Anyone else? Okay, now one else is raising their hands. We're going to close the public forum. Moving on to consent agenda items. There are four items on the consent agenda. Item number one, two, three, and four. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Mr. Finch, you're up, right? Okay, okay. If none, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda item one, two, three, and four as presented?
Motion approved as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch and second by Eldridge to approve consent agenda item one, two, three for us presented. Everyone heard the motion? The additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed seven oh. Thank you. Moving on to discussion action items, item number five. Discuss, consider, and act upon accepting a donation from Atmos Energy in the amount of $5,000 for the development of an emergency operations center in the new fire station and provide naming rights for the said room. Have you, Ms. Katry?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, Atmos, the representatives couldn't be here tonight. They have already provided the check. So I am going to have you go ahead and vote to accept the donation. But they will be back on July 13 to actually present you with the check as well. Again, this is for the emergency operations center and will help provide needed equipment. And this will be where, when there's an emergency in the community, such as a tornado or, you know, anything like that, we would gather in terms of coordinating our emergency response from that location.
So I'm going to take any public comments at this time on item number five. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council on item five, please come forward or raise your hand if you're calling in through Zoom. No one from the members of the audience is coming forward. Joseph, is anyone raising their hand?
No.
No hands raised. We're going to close the public comment. Council, are there any discussions? Mr. Freeman, it looks like you have a comment, sir.
Is it truly a donation if they're actually buying the naming rights of a room? And I appreciate the money, but it's a donation, but they're also getting naming rights to a room. So I mean, it's, we'll absolutely take the money. They can absolutely have the name, but it just seems like maybe it's not a donation. Maybe they're getting something out of it as well. Just something that as I was reading this, it's like donations, you give money and you get nothing in return. They're giving money and they're getting something in return. So it's not, you know, again, we'll gladly take the money. But at the same time, I'm not 100% sure it's a donation either.
I don't know. That sounds like an accounting question to me. So for our discretion purpose, do you have a preference one way or another? Okay.
Okay. Get something in return for the money that you give? Not necessarily.
Are you asking to change the motion or something? Okay, just make a point.
And I think, you know, it's pretty typical for, you know, my line of work that when somebody makes a donation, that usually there's a wall, we acknowledge donors. So we offered the wall in front of the room to just to acknowledge their donation with the name. So I don't feel like the donation was contingent upon naming rights. It was our way to thank them and acknowledge the donation. So I do see your nuance, but it really did flow down that way. You're welcome.
Are there additional discussions on the side of the council? If there are none, I'm going to call for a motion, item number five. Motion made by Ms. Wiegand to approve item number five as presented. Second by Mr. Eldridge. Everyone heard the motion? The additional discussions? If none, all in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed seven oh. Thank you. Thank you, council. Moving on to item number six. Discuss, consider, and act upon resolution 20-35A, a resolution of the town council of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas to approve funding for Provident Realty Realty Advisors, the amount of $12,442 for targeted infrastructure to promote new or expanded business development in compliance with the section 501.103 of the Texas Local Government Court. Mr. Barr?
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening, sir.
This is, this item is for the Long Creek Crossing development. Basically, in 2018, the previous public works director had asked that the developer upsized the line from an eight inch to a 12 inch line for future expansion in that area. So this is simply the difference in cost from the eight inch line to the 12 inch line. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One question for you. Is the line already installed? Or that is, what's the status of the actual line?
Yes, sir. It was installed at the time the first medical facility went in down there on that property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barr. Counsel, I'm going to open up for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council on item number six, please come forward or raise your hand. No one is coming forward. Mr. Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No, there's not.
No hands raised. So I'm going to close the public comments on item number six. Counsel, are there additional discussions on item number six? If there are none, I'm going to call for a motion, item number six. Second. Motion made by Mr. Eldridge, second by Mr. Finch to approve item number six as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? There are none? A call, all in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed seven oh. Moving on to item number seven. Discuss, consider, and act upon resolution 20-36A, a resolution of the town council of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas, approving funding for a 4B project to provide funding for an economic development incentive for Project STG in an amount not to exceed $50,000 to promote new or expanded business development in compliance with the section 505.158 of the Texas Local Government Court. Mr. Barr?
Mayor and council, this item we've discussed in the past. And additionally, most recently, the 4B board approved this unanimously at the June 9 meeting. And so essentially, this is an incentive for some folks to help the, help finish out costs. It's an initial $30,000 upfront. And there's an additional up to $20,000 sales tax reimbursement over a three-year period of time. And again, these are all meant to help the tenant to finish out costs, kitchen expenses, things of that nature. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'm going to open for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council on item number seven, please come forward. If you're calling in using Zoom, please raise your hand. No one is coming forward. Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No hands.
No hands raised. So I'm going to close the public comments on item number seven. Counsel, are there any questions or discussions on item number seven?
Mayor, a question regarding the $50,000 toward the equipment. We had discussions as to whether or not that equipment would stay with the facility should the business leave. Did we resolve that issue contractually?
Mr. Barr?
I would have to look in the performance agreement.
I don't think that we ever voted to make that decision. It was under discussion, but we never actually moved forward with that recommendation. We just went with the $30,000. It was recommended by 4B. And then there was a request during the 4B presentation to add additional funding. And the 4B voted to do it as a sales tax reimbursement, but there was never a contingency that the equipment stayed with the facility.
Ms. Allen, are you good with it? Or you are recommending a change?
I'll go with the council's support. If that's the direction we need to go. I'm just not in favor of paying for other people's equipment that may leave and they, they take the money that we gave to the town. It's a, it's a business thing that we're giving them money to do and take the equipment with them. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. But, you know, if the rest of the council wants to proceed that way, then I'll, I'll go the same direction.
You can vote in dissent if you want to. You may vote in dissent if you choose to.
Susan Burton.
Yes, sir.
Burton, has the actual agreement been drafted? Have we drafted the actual agreements?
It's attached.
Sorry.
It's been drafted, but nothing's been signed.
So, Mr. Barr, there is no such, Ms. Gopri explained that we didn't discuss that. So that, that performance agreement does not include that speculation, correct?
No, sir. I don't think it's spelled out specifically.
Burton, can I just ask you a question? I felt like when we drilled back down with the applicant and council member Eldridge, I think you may have still been there, that they specified that it wasn't necessarily just for the equipment. It was for startup costs. So it wasn't specifically for.
Correct. Part of that, part of the initial funding was the developer did assist with basically a grease trap. And there was a significant amount of money that could be spent upfront for the concrete to cover that up. So I mean, if I remember correctly, when we met with them, they, they already had a general idea of what they were doing with their kitchen equipment, that these expenses were not necessarily, you know, this money upfront is not necessarily to pay for equipment. It was just to help them get established and be able to use the space.
Mayor, I guess my problem would be then that the background information in these notes indicates that we're paying $30,000 for associated finish out, equipment, fixtures, and furniture. And if we're, if we're providing for a finish out, I would, I would suggest that at least in this background, I haven't found this in the contractual notes here, that that be amended to show finish out and not that we're purchasing equipment. Or I'm sorry, purchasing furniture and fixtures. I think that's.
It's all just part of the overall startup cost, but we could clarify that.
So you're talking about the background information or it's part of the, that's a staff note, right?
It is a staff note, but as a minimum, I can't find that in the contract where it says that. But as a minimum, I'd like our notes, background to be amended so that we doesn't show that we're buying their equipment. I don't, I have an issue with us doing that anyway. We've talked about that before. But for us to say that, hey, we're buying a startup person's equipment? Yeah, I don't know. I just have an issue with that.
Section 4.8, section four subsection A, they're talking about the $30,000. I don't know if that's all off it or not.
Yeah, again, Mayor, I can't find it in the contract and it says the same language as in the background. So maybe it's just a matter of amending our background notes to, to strike those words.
I, I'm really sorry because I want to totally do what you want, but I don't think we can amend what's on the posted agenda. Once it's posted, it is, I mean, you can by right of minutes say, I want to clarify that this is the situation, but I can't go back and change what's on the agenda.
What do we want to clarify, wait? What were we wanting to clarify? Can't turn the mic on, sir.
It says that we're buying equipment. Look in the background, not in the contract, but the background of what our agenda report says. It says that we're providing $30,000 associated equipment, fixtures, and furniture. I don't remember us talking about using money for fixtures and other equipment. And I have a little bit of an issue with, with some of these topics we've had already. So if that's not what we're, what we're actually paying the money for or funding the money for, I don't think that's, I don't think those words match the contract. If it does, then I.
It's just qualified expenses and startup costs. So I'm not saying it's not used for equipment. I'm just saying it's not exclusively like an itemized list of equipment. So that was why we didn't tie it to get the equipment coming to us in ownership or for some reason they, you know, failed as a business. So, I mean, it was just the nuance that we're not going out and buying specific equipment. We're paying for startup costs. They can use this towards startup costs. So I don't want to be the same. I mean, that some of that may be some equipment. But it doesn't only for equipment, it's for startup costs.
So Rachel, let me ask you, Ms. Katry, maybe. When we document the minutes, can we capture the, the comment made by Mr. Allen?
I can capture that. But again, we can amend the staff memo. And if it's for startup costs, then we can.
Right. The, the contract does say on item H, under definitions, that a qualified expenditure means those expenditures consisting of finish out costs, furniture improvements, industrial fixtures, office equipment, and kitchen equipment to be located on the property. And those expenses which otherwise meet the definition of project as that term is described in, and then the appropriate legal.
So that's the whole kitchen thing, right? So they can pretty much sum it into it and get the money back, right?
Right.
Mayor, could I add something here?
Yes, sir.
If we're going to give them $30,000, we don't know exactly what they're going to spend that exact $30,000 on. If they have finish out costs that go above and beyond $30,000, they could say, hey, we spending on that. And they could have spent it on a new oven. I mean, it's kind of like these PPP loans that we're dealing with right now. They give you the money and say it has to be spent for this, this, and that. You don't know if those exact dollars are being spent towards that. You know, they incurred the cost that exceeded that amount over that period of time. We could, we could put it in the contract that they have to do this and do that. But I really think we're splitting hairs as far as, I mean, if they've got $30,000 worth of expenses for finish outs, who's to say it didn't go to that versus something else? We would never be able to know exactly what it went to.
Ms. Allen, do you have a thought? The good is going forward?
Yeah, I'm, I'm done with discussion.
Counsel, are there additional discussions on this topic? If there are none, I call for a motion, item number seven.
Mayor, make a motion to approve item number seven as presented.
Motion made by Ms. Wiegand to approve item number seven as presented. Second by Mr. Eldridge. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify. All opposed? Voting in favor, Mr. Eldridge, Mr. Wiegand, Mr. Finch, Mr. Clark, Mr. Freeman, and Mr. George. Voting against is Mr. Allen. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Barr. Moving on to item number eight. Discuss, consider, and act upon resolution 20-37, a resolution of the town council of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas, modifying the town personnel policies by amending resolution 19-11, providing a severability clause, providing a repealer clause, and providing an effective date. Ms. Katry?
I just want to make sure Gretchen's not on the call, is she? Okay, I'll cover this item. And periodically, we amend our policies and procedures. And one of these amendments, the HIV and AIDS workplace policy was a requirement for us to adopt this particular policy in order to receive CARES Act funding. We also amended a part of our tuition reimbursement to allow our firefighters to go to paramedic school, which benefits us so that they can move up in the organization. We will have, be coming back soon with another amendment that was a result of the recent Supreme Court decision regarding LGBTQ, LGBTQT. But we weren't quite ready with that, but we had to pass this one for the HIV and AIDS in order to receive our CARES Act funding. So we ask that you vote to approve this tonight.
Going to call for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward, you speak to the council on item number eight. Please come forward. Or if anyone calling in through Zoom, may I raise their hand? No one is coming from the members of the audience? Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No hands.
No hands raised. So I'm going to close the public comments, counsel. Are there any discussions on item number eight? Mr. Finch?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a few questions regarding our policy on paramedic school. So Chief, you may get ready. I'm curious, are we going to allow this? So basically, if you're a, I feel like I'm reverbing here. Joseph, I'm not sure it's me. So basically, if you're, if you're a firefighter and you have one year of service, we'll pay for your paramedic school. Do we have any kind of tiered where we, we say ECA, EMT? Or we go directly to paramedic? And I'm curious as to why we would jump over all that and go straight to paramedic? Because I'd be curious about the cost associated with paramedic school as well.
And I'll start to answer while the chief's coming up here. But all of them are EMTs, at least already. So our EMT would be going to paramedic school. So it is just kind of that filling those paramedics. Doug, Chief, you want to add anything? Does that mic work? Yeah.
Good afternoon. The thing with paramedic school and EMTs, when you're hiring, the commission only will certify you as a firefighter EMT. So that's how it starts. As a man and woman presenting their career and the qualifications that are needed to advance as far as medical care, that's when we would like to implement the paramedic school. There are some internal rules, if you will, procedures that we're not going to invest in something heavy in the paramedic school for somebody just walked to the door and said, because we don't want to be concerned as, you know, to be concerned as, you know, how long will they stay with us? But when we have EMTs, this also gives us the ability to advance in our paramedic treatment of patients. That's where we can do the heart monitoring, the drugs and things like that. So what helps us there is, is that when we have paramedics go off duty or vacation somewhat, we have the ability to fill that slot with a paramedic. Otherwise, we'd have to go down in the level of care for our citizens.
We also do have in the policy that once they complete that program, that they do have to stay on with the town for a period of time. It gets two years, or they have to pay that tuition back to us.
Okay. What's the, what's the cost now for paramedic school at Brookhaven?
It's around $3,000. The situation with certified firefighters working for a town, they waive the tuition in the state schools as of junior colleges where Brookhaven and those sort of things are. So if you go to paramedic school, it's, it's a cost of $3,000. But then the fee is deducted, their tuition is deducted from that because there'll be certified, there are certified Texas firefighters.
So how much is the net expense? Is 3,000 the tuition or not?
3,000 is the, 3,000 is the total. I think the tuition and, and please don't, don't hold it.
It's okay. Is it net 3,000 or 3,000 plus some, or three, plus some?
It's 3,000.
Net?
Yeah. We're talking probably the tuition. And some schools are so different, even though they're the same junior college like Dallas County. I want to say at least, so I don't over, overstep, tuition's around $400.
Twenty.
And we actually put into the policy.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, we put into the policy what the actual cost of the tuition is at Brookhaven College or what they pay, whichever is lower. It's the same thing we do in our regular tuition. You know, you can go wherever you want, but we're only going to pay what a state school would, would cost. So that's the same wording that we added here, but we use Brookhaven because it's a common one to go to.
I also see that we have, for regular school, we have performance benchmarks. And in paramedic school, we don't really have any performance benchmarks. Basically, what if they failed? What if they couldn't make, because it's a hard school, right? And so what if, what if they didn't make it through, Chief? What's our, I mean, if we've already paid for tuition reimbursement and they don't make it, do we, I mean, what's our recourse there? What do we do?
Whether it's a one-shot deal, it's not a one-shot deal. When they take the state test and they have a retry, a second retry. But if that happens, in my, in my experience that, you know, we really bang, banged the, the learning on them. So that way we can make sure that they, they do pass. And your question is, it's a big incentive in paramedic school and the fire service because what, what we would do is we also encourage paramedics in their, in their promotions. So it would have to be a, a paramedic preferred in, in a promotion. So they have, they have that opportunity. So it's, it's a, you know, it's just a career ladder for firefighters. We don't necessarily do the, do, you know, the business stuff on, as of other, you know, town employees. This is fire related. So this is, this is still part of training that we want to provide to, to our firefighters.
And the policy is written that it's pass, fail, pass is acceptable. And that's what the reimbursement is based upon.
And it's a reimbursement.
Yes.
It's not the town pays for it and then waits for them to see if they pass or fail and they have to give the money back.
Good point.
It's a reimbursement.
Gotcha.
And it should be that way with the regular reimbursement as well.
It is. And, and regular reimbursement, you're actually reimbursed based upon your grade. So you only get 70% of your tuition if you get a C. So it's based upon how you perform in the class, which is why you see all these smarties getting straight A's.
Good point. Thank you, Mark. Couple of other questions, Chief. Sorry to blow this, drag this on.
You're fine. No, you're fine.
Just want to make sure we're on the same page. Do we pay the individual firefighters to attend paramedic school? Or is this on their own?
What we try to do is, is fix their schedule accordingly. If they're on shift, and then that's where we make sure we have automatic coverage. In other words, the more people we have on shift, you know, the additional people that we've been requesting, then we won't, we'll over, the best way to explain it is, if you're running a firefighter shift in the normal position, you have 15 firefighters on shift. That's for all three shifts. So what that allows you is to be able to have coverage for when you're on vacation and things like that. So what we typically try to do is work with the firefighters. If they happen to go to paramedic school, which is a day class, they're, they're there during the day. We cover that day shift. And then when they finish school, then they come back to work that night.
So how would, how would we cover that? By additional, bringing in additional people? Or do we have enough manpower that could cover that during the day?
We're going to, we're working on the covering during the day.
I'm just trying to get.
We haven't addressed that yet because we haven't, we haven't provided this policy out yet.
Yeah, I don't want to get in the weeds with your business. I just know there's a budget impact in the day.
Absolutely.
Money's not the only thing. I mean, trust me, I want everybody to be a paramedic. If I get sick, I want, I want the highest level of care I can. But there is a, there is a big picture impact because once we adopt this policy, then it's not just one time, it's reoccurring, right? There could be if somebody else comes on, then we have to offer the same thing. How many, how many firefighters right now would be eligible for this program right now? If we were to institute it, how many do we have right now that would be eligible?
Right now, I would say we have two.
Two, okay. Okay.
And that's another thing. We're not just going to flood the market with paramedic school at, at a year, obviously because it's a budget item. And that is one of the things as far as, you know, when they go to school, what do we do? That's, that's heavy on our planning of how we, how we provide that.
Thank you, Chief. And I assume once we they become paramedics, we would rotate them in. Would they rotate into the ambulance? Or do we have, I'm not sure how you do this, but do you have certain people who are assigned ambulance? Or would you rotate them in now that they're paramedics into the, to ambulance service?
We rotate because of the fact is in our situation now, basically if you're on the engine and we get the ambulance call goes out first and we get another ambulance call, we put paramedic and EMT on that second ambulance.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you.
Thank you for the questions.
Mr. Egan, Chief, and Susan may answer toward this too, but are any of the, the tuition reimbursements retro for a firefighter who was on staff at the time or employed with the town at the time, but we didn't have the budgetary money for him to be able to go? So he went ahead and paid and got certified. At the next budget cycle, is it possible? Or maybe some budget cycle later on down the road? Or is this getting too difficult? That he could get reimbursed? But he has to be working for the town in order for that to happen. But he might.
Right now, we just haven't, this is, we're just now implementing this.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, right now, we do have, we communicate a lot about, hey, if you want to go to school next semester, you need to let us know during the budget process. If you read the policy, it clearly states that you got to give us a heads up so we can budget accordingly. And, you know, there's just some natural thing that happens that it's only a few people each semester.
That's one thing that I'm proud of, of my guys. When, I have one right now that just finished paramedic. He took on, he took on the big hit of paramedic school funding himself. I told him after, you know, he completes, it's kind of like the question was asked earlier, you know, well, what happens if he doesn't, you know, anybody doesn't him or her complete the course? The drive for him was obviously finishing paramedic school and then visiting with Susan, you know, only then will we get the opportunity to look into promoting him to the paramedic pay level after the budget year. And I've already communicated to the guys, hey, if y'all are doing paramedic school during the year, I'm just saying we're doing our best to provide you that upgrade sooner. But if anything else, it's actually going to be toward the new budget year.
Okay. Additional questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Well, certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel, I'm sorry, Mr. Finch, do you have a question? Counsel, are there additional discussions on this topic? I think I called for public comments, right? Can I? Okay. If there are none, I'm going to call for a motion right number eight.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve item eight as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch, second by Mr. Egan to approve item number eight as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If there are none, all in favor signify. All opposed? Motion passed, seven all. Moving on to item number nine, discuss, consider and the proposed budget presentations with a focus on the road impact, water and sewer impact and general fund economic development. Ms. Hopkins?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is Phyllis.
It's Phyllis, how are you?
I will be stepping in. Hi. I will be stepping in this evening for Liz to go over this part of the agenda. This evening's item is to discuss and consider the proposed budget presentation with our focus this evening to be on the impact fund, the general fund, economic development fund, as well as a review again of the homestead amenities, which was presented at your last meeting. I'm going to start with the road impact fund. There are some assumptions. This is, this is going to start on page four of your presentation. Looking at the revenues for next year, we are basing our revenues on 90 permits at a cost of $2,654 each. This is currently reduced from our current year budget from 100 permits to 90, primarily due to the COVID-19 with developers reducing the number of spec homes. So revenues for the road impact fund for next year are budgeted at $248,867. That includes the interest earned and the impact fees. Our expenditures for next year for the road impact is going to be the Collins Road Phase One, Collins Road Phase One, Stony Creek and the Council Road are all budgeted for the current year. So for next year, we don't have any items budgeted expense wise for the road impact account. However, if some of these items do not trigger this year, they will lapse into the next year. So we will have zero expenses budgeted currently for 2020, 2021. And our budgeted ending fund balance for the road impact account is $753,508. I'm going to go on and do the water and the sewer impact. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. The water and sewer impact fund is going to be on your page six and page seven of your presentation. Again, for the year 2021, we are budgeting the permits at 90 for the same reason as the roadway impact, primarily due to the COVID-19 and the developers building just the spec homes. Revenues we have for sewer impact at $42,570. For the water impact, $241,740. We have $11,250 for interest earned. Bring in your proposed revenues for the water and sewer impact fund to $295,560. The currently our funds for the expenses for water and sewer are primarily due to the debt for the bond principal and bond interest payments. There is some interest expense budgeted each year for premium amortization on the 2013 bond. We are projecting a ending fund balance in the water and sewer impact at $223,521. I'm going to skip over the general fund economic development fund for a minute and just touch on the homestead amenities fund, which was presented at your last meeting. We did make a slight adjustment and wanted to bring that back before review. There were no changes made to any of the funds. Our ending fund balance is still projected to be budgeted at $281,436. The changes that were made, we incorrectly identified the phase for the homestead amenities as 3B and it should have been 7B. And we have the lots listed incorrectly at 38 and it should have been 35. Those were the only changes to your homestead amenities. The general fund economic development fund, I was going to let our town manager address that particular fund.
Thank you, Phyllis. So this is some new wording that you haven't seen before. This is actually the transfer from when we dissolved FORA. So you can see that after we take out all of the items that are encumbered for obligations that FORA had, the amount of money that's, we're estimating will be left is $2.368 million. And that'll be transferred into what we've now renamed the general fund economic development fund. We have budgeted this money for this fiscal year. And we did that because if we don't do that, and there is a project that you decide by vote of the council that you want to spend this funding on, you can't do it unless we do a budget amendment. So we're going ahead and we're budgeting two line items. One of the line items says economic development and the other one says land acquisition because both of those items are in your strategic plan for this year. So it's just opening it up for the potential that a project comes forward that you feel is important. That project has not been identified at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about this fund.
Susan, do I take public comments on this one?
We are not voting on this tonight. I mean, you're happy to take public comments if you, if you'd like, if somebody's there. But we aren't voting tonight. These are just a series of presentations for y'all to give us feedback so we can tweak the budget as we go along.
Okay. Joseph, anyone on the audience? Okay, there are no members of the audience? Anyone coming forward to ask questions? Please come forward. No one is coming from the members.
I did want to add, Mayor, that we did include the in code detail information at the very end of that packet that provides some additional information for your review. And that there are some additional funds that we will be looking at, but we'll be addressing those at subsequent meetings.
Thank you, Phyllis. My apologies for speaking over you. Anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council, please come forward or raise your hand. No one is coming forward? Joseph, anyone raising the hand?
No, there's not.
No hands raised. We're going to post the public comments, counsel. Are there any questions for Ms. Phyllis or Ms. Catherine? Okay, so there are no decisions here, no action. So I'm going to move on to item number 10, proceeds status update regarding the timeline and implementation of the police department. Chiefs?
Preparing, sir? Counsel, we've been really busy with the hiring process. Our sergeants have been doing an outstanding job of, the hiring process is about a seven step process. So they have to administer the entrance exam and then the physical agility exam. They have to conduct oral review boards, polygraph exams, and then the background investigation, which Mr. Finch probably knows the background investigation is very detailed process. And our, our sergeants have traveled all the way from Red River County down to Houston reviewing these officers and candidates' personnel files and interviewing people and coworkers and employee, and employers. So we want to get the very best people. Our first four officers start Monday. We have two more in the final stages of the hiring process. And we have another five that are in current background investigations now. So a lot of our time has been, been with that hiring process. Our eighth and final patrol car has arrived and is outfitted and with the in-car video and body worn cameras and everything else. We're still waiting on our two SRO cars and our CID vehicle. Our generator installation has begun and it continues into next week. They've poured the slab and they plan to drop the generator in Friday and then hook it up on Saturday morning. We'll have some electricity outage Saturday morning while they do that. Random patrols have also begun with the sergeant and I. Sergeants actually worked their first major crash on Collins Street last week. Sergeant Gillum rolled up on it. And we had the roadway cleared within less than 30 minutes and everything went fine. We had two meetings. We met with organized protesters last week prior to the protest. And they were very productive meetings. And the protests and marches went well without any major complications or issues. I had a meeting with our state rep, Brett Abowers, last week. And we discussed social reform and justice reform and had a very productive conversation. and had a very productive conversation. And Ms. Abowers did emphasize that she supports all the law enforcement in her district. And she's here for us if we need her. IT is continuing. This is a big one for us, the RMS CAD implementation. I know that the crimes people and, and Joseph are doing a lot of IT stuff. And I have to defer to him to explain it. But I know that there's a lot of activity going on right now in that. And we're hoping to have, we're hoping to have, I'm hoping to have our RMS on a computer by the end of this week. So we'll see how that goes. And then our equipment procurement continues. Our four new officers, all their uniforms have come in. They've all been measured for their vests. Their first initial four vests that, the first three sergeant and I was measured for in March. They arrived today. And they're very nice. They fit us very well. So that's happening. We received two of the ticket riders that we purchased today and our docking station. And that, that software that goes on those is part of the crimes implementation. And then I know Rachel and Lily and Joseph are working with Tyler Technologies and Crimes to get that interface to allow Crimes to pipe into the court system when we write our, our citations. We put in a, an AC in our server room that Joseph's been standing up. And our lobby is, is finished with the exception of the ballistic glass door and windows, which is set for June 30th. That's about it.
And Mayor, if I could just.
Yes, ma'am.
Add, the other component of this is the actual 911. And Erica did a yeoman's job getting all of the contracts out to every single provider who provides service, phone service, or we call dynamic service through your computer in Sunny Bell so that when you dial 911, it actually will go to the right dispatch center. So those have all been mailed out. They have 90 days in which to make those changes. And then we also received word from NCT 911, which is the COG, that they are working on our contract, which is really the very last step in the process to be able to put it all together and, and have our launch on October 1st. And I think you probably got the calendar invitation. We're hoping that the COVID-19 will take a break so that we can actually have an, a kickoff for our, for our police department.
So Chief, let me ask you, I, I remember not only 911 call, but 911 texting. Would that also work for us? They have the same system?
Yeah, I believe NCT 911, that is called, Susan, help me out. Is that future 911? There's a special program that's in the works on that texting. And I don't know enough about it, but I believe so. I'm just not sure on the implementation timeline on that, that.
Yeah, I think it's called Next Generation. And, right, Chief, Next Generation. And one of the things that we had to do during this process, and again, there's a million details that we try not to completely overwhelm everyone, but is we hired a, a third-party company to do a lot of work on our GIS data and our addressing data to make sure that it is really clean and clear. And as we start the interface with NCT 911, that it's, we're off to a really good start. And then from there, that company will help maintain it. And so that's part of the reason why we had to do that is so that we're prepared for the next generation of dispatch.
So when we, when we transition to SPD, would we have that to that say?
I don't.
I'm just stepping in the process.
I don't think that it's ready yet, but it's something that's in the hopper.
Gotcha.
But I don't think we'll have it immediately. And it's not that we won't, but I don't think that whole system won't have it right away. And again, I'm, I'm pretty confident of that. But if it's a different answer, I'll get back to you, okay?
Gotcha. Joseph, do you want to add anything?
The chief mentioned that we added an air conditioner in both server rooms. There's been some server room remodeling. We have the new servers and storage in place. These servers are beefy servers, so they're server hosts. And they host a lot of servers on those servers. So we're getting that set up. We're getting the CAD RMS software going. There's also Net Motion, a new server going for that. And that's going to help the officers connect back here while they're in their squad cars. So a lot of technology coming along really well.
Thank you, Joseph. Mr. Finch, do you have a question, sir?
Hey, Chief, good evening. A quick question for you regarding our traffic enforcement. I heard you say something, you had your ticket riders and things. And while I'm not looking for a lot of citations, I do believe there's a lot of benefit in us being aggressive in our traffic enforcement, specifically in some areas of town that we've had problems, I know you're aware of, on Collins Road. We recently had a mailbox taken out. I've been passed on Collins Road several times coming home from work. And so I'm curious as to where we are in being able to do some targeted traffic enforcement with our troops.
As soon as the RMS CAD gets up operational and in the cars, we should be able to go. We have ticket riders now under the old system. And we're actually going to start traffic enforcement next week when the officers come on. The sergeants, in addition to everything else they're doing, will begin training these officers. And that will be part of it is learning how to operate our, our software and ticket riders.
And I know you got a lot to do, but I know that this has a direct impact on our, on our residents' safety down that road particularly. And I've experienced it myself to where I have been passed at high rates of speed on that road in the afternoon. And so it does cause me great concern, especially with that little turn right there where somebody took out a mailbox. And so I know our residents along that area are, are definitely concerned about it. So anyway, thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. I know you got a lot going on, but I know that's, that's a hot topic right now.
I have an additional question for Chief this time.
I've got one.
Mr. Freeman, sorry.
Chief Ox, as I look at it, you're about 100 days out. How do you feel? Feel like it's going to be up and running, fully ready to go? Everything, all gears running on October 1st?
No question.
Great answer.
Anyone else? Mr. Cock?
So a quick question on something that I think Susan said a few minutes ago about setting up the 911. Postcards are going out and people will have to register their, their mobile phones? What was that about? Not registering, but postcards were going out, something about phone numbers?
What, what we sent out were the contracts. So you lies past an ordinance for a fee, a 911 fee. That is paid the, the provider. So like, for example, AT&T or anyone like that. So surprisingly, there is so many more providers than you would imagine. So it was a stack of contracts about this high that went out in the mail. And, you know, it took weeks to identify for every phone number in town, what provider they are contracted with. So there was a lot of work involved with matching those up. And then we sent the contracts to each of those providers. They'll return them to us. But in the contract, it spells out how they are now to route those 911 calls so that it changes from Dallas County to Seagull.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, Mayor, just real quick. Chief, I want to thank you for the work you continue to do, the outstanding work, the timely work. Myself, and I'm sure that most of the staff and council here would agree that we support you guys and we're proud of the work you're doing here in our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Okay, that are none. Chief, thanks very much for everything you do. We're going to write number 11, Mayor Council Request for Future Staff Updates and Agenda Items. Anyway. Okay, if not, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Finch, second by Mr. Eek, and to adjourn the council meeting for today. Did you say, Mr. Allen? Allen, did you second it? Okay, Mr. Allen seconded, my bad. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed, seven all. The time is 8:05. I have the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody, staff, council, appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.